Good evening and welcome to the January 17th meeting of the San Bruno Planning Commission. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Samut.
Present.
Commissioner Chase.
Present.
Chair Peterson.
Present.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Mishra.
Here.
Commissioner Marshall called earlier today and he will not be able to make it here today.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to ask Commissioner Mishra to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free and just for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for December 6th. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion when you approve the minutes as written.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number two is communications. Staff?
Just our usual that people at home could find the packets all in digital form on the sanbruno.ca.gov website in the Community Development section under Planning Commission.
Thank you. Item number three is public comment on items not on the agenda. This is if there's anyone who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda tonight. Seeing none, I'll close that public comment and move on to agenda item number four, announcement of conflict of interest. Any of the commissioners have a conflict tonight? Seeing none, we'll move right on to number five, new business. Consider adoption of a resolution confirming review of the 2011 through 16 five-year capital improvement program and the 2011-2012 capital improvement program budget and its conformance with the general plan.
Thank you. About three years ago now, actually, the Planning Commission, may remember the Planning Commission and the City Council, after years of consideration and development, adopted the San Bruno General Plan. And this is a document that guides, in essence, guides every single city policy decision for a 10 to 20-year period. Now, one of those policy decisions that both the Planning Commission and the City Council has to make, and ultimately the City Council has to make, is adoption of a capital improvement program. And that's what you have in front of you tonight, you are given. And this has everything from city infrastructure projects to public improvements, all laid out, as well as the funding that's attached to those. And the decision that's before you hear tonight, and you have to make on an annual basis, is this CIP consistent with the general plan? Staff has reviewed this, although this is mostly a public services and parks and recreation document. We have sat in many of the meetings and have reviewed this document and are familiar with the general plan, and we are making the recommendation that it is consistent. If this is approved by the Planning Commission tonight, it will then go on to the City Council for full consideration sometime in the next month or two. Do you take any questions?
Any questions for staff? The commission has received this document in our emails, as referenced on the website. And I know I took a look at it. Do any of the commissioners have any comment on the item?
Through the chair. Aaron, as we spoke about before the meeting, I read the document. It seems to be very consistent with the general plan. The one thing I did notice is under the park and rec heading, there's the issue of undergrounding the creek that runs through the city park. And this year, they've suggested possibly being more sustainable and adding a sort of naturalized creek feature to that. And after giving it some thought, I thought we could possibly become quite a bit more sustainable by not only having that open creek, but if we could have a catchment system to catch some of that creek water and turn it into irrigation for the park, it might be helpful. We'd also eliminate some of the burden on the well system for the, you know, the equal amount of water that we don't use from watering the grass. So if you want to pass that on to parks and rec, that would be a good thing to incorporate in future discussions.
Great, I will.
Thank you.
I'll pass it on.
Are there any other comments? Chair is open for a motion to adopt the resolution.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Chase.
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution confirming review of the 2011-2016 five-year capital improvement program and the 2011-2012 capital improvement program budget with its conformance with the San Bruno General Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is a roll call.
You could just note it's an all in favor one.
It can be that, okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So you can, is this resolution different than other resolutions? I thought resolutions were roll call votes.
I asked that question right before I gave you the answer, so I'll pass it on to the city attorney.
That'll teach, Aaron, for asking me a question right before the meeting without having a chance to think about all of its ramifications. Generally, resolutions don't require a roll call vote. In situations where you're acting in your capacity to approve or deny a project, in those situations, you might want to use a roll call vote, especially if it isn't unanimous, so that the record's clear about it. If you're moving ordinances forward to the City Council, that might be another situation you might want to do it. But in this particular situation, you don't need a roll call.
Thank you. All right, move on to item number six. Six A is a public hearing for 3180 Crestmore Drive, a request for use permit to legalize unpermitted construction, which increases the gross floor area by greater than 50% and exceeds the 44% lot coverage requirement per sections 12-230B1 and 12-240B3 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Thank you and good evening. As stated, the applicant has applied for a use permit to legalize an unpermitted sunroom that's located on the north side of the existing single-family dwelling. The use permit is required because the unpermitted sunroom results in a greater than 50% cumulative expansion, and it exceeds the 44% lot coverage requirement. The site itself is located on the west side of Crestmore Drive and is currently developed with a two-story, single-family dwelling. One thing that I would like to point out is that this specific use permit request was approved by the Planning Commission in October of 2009. The previous property owner never obtained a building permit to officially legalize the sunroom, and therefore, the use permit approval has since expired. Since that time, the, or actually recently, the property ownership just changed hands, and the new property owners have applied for a use permit to legalize that sunroom. So basically, the application before us tonight is exactly the same as the application that was approved in 2009. Overall, staff does support this use permit request. The proposal meets all setback, height, and floor area guidelines. One thing I would like to point out is that the existing single-family home does consist of stucco facade, and the existing sunroom utilizes a vertical wood siding. So staff has recommended that vertical wood siding be replaced with a stucco finish. The new property owners have agreed to do so. Regarding the lot coverage entitlement, staff does find that there is specific open space on the lot. Specifically, there is a 20-foot, 6-inch rear yard with a 128-square-foot deck, and additionally, there is 19 feet of front yard space. With that, staff would recommend that the Planning Commission approve this use permit request, subject to findings of fact 1 through 7, and conditions of approval 1 through 24. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Just so it's clear for the folks at home, this is not new construction. This has already been constructed and is existing in place, correct?
Correct. This is not new construction.
Thank you.
It was constructed without permits, is that right?
It was constructed without the benefit of obtaining a permit, essentially.
And then on the previous approval of this, no building permit was obtained.
Correct.
And did staff consider any methods that might assure the city that there was, that a building permit and proper conformance with this, if it's approved, would occur?
Yes, and I'll let the applicant speak to that, but the new property owners have indicated that they don't even want, they haven't occupied the structure yet, and they don't plan on occupying the structure until this is all taken care of. So they are going to move forward with the use permit, actually with the building permit to officially legalize this sunroom.
So there's no specific assurance that this will happen?
There's no specific condition of approval, no.
Is that, is that good? Would the staff think that's a good idea?
Through the chair.
Yes.
So, in general, if they weren't, so far, this property owner has been more than willing to comply. They bought a property with an existing code enforcement case on it. Our first goal is to always work with people, and if they want to comply, you know, we take them through the process to comply. If, for some reason, they backtrack, and I don't have any indication this would ever happen, there, it would fall into a typical code enforcement case, where there would be one or two, so first, they would get, you know, 10-day notice to comply. If they don't get that, they could get hit with fines up to, on a daily basis, $100, $200, $500. They could also, if it came to a situation, and we use it rarely, but from time to times, you know, we could do an abatement where we actually go there and construct it, and then play some lean against the property to collect the money. So that would be a very extreme case, but that would be handled through a code enforcement process, and would give us just as much leverage than if we had a condition of approval within the conditions of approval, than the staff.
So, in essence, you do have a mechanism to obtain compliance?
Correct. And in a way, they're right now on their path to compliance, because this was the first step that they had to take care of.
Okay. Well, another question. The lot coverage is a little higher than the zoning requirement, but I thought that one of the, one good reason that this is not a problem is that the enclosed area is entirely encircled by the house, and so if it were there or not there, the essential lot coverage is the same either way.
Yes, that's definitely true.
Wouldn't that be worthwhile to put in the findings someplace?
We could add that to the finding language.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Mishra.
I have a question on conditions of approval number 23 on page 16. It says, "Provide hardwired smoke alarms with battery backup." I thought it was just smoke alarms, not hardwired.
Um, I believe the building official, I believe the requirement is hardwired smoke alarms with battery backup.
So has it changed?
I can, we can double-check with the building official to ensure that this is the correct language within the conditions.
My question is regarding hardwired versus having smoke alarms. I mean, I agree with the smoke alarms.
I personally don't know the answer to that question, but I can confirm with the building official.
Yeah.
I can tell you the answer. It's, the purpose for the battery backup is if there's a power failure, the smoke alarms will operate with a battery backup.
I completely agree with this method.
It's very common.
It's more or less, if it's a construct, if it's already constructed, this is an extra step that requires removal of JIP and adding more, you know, instead of just putting a unit in, so.
Any other questions for staff, for, by the commission for staff? Okay, thank you very much, staff. Now, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite the applicant to step to the podium and see if there are any questions and give a presentation, if you wish. Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is, excuse me, Maria Rhodes, and my address is 323 89th Street in Daly City.
Thank you. Did you have any presentation or?
Well, I don't, I just wanted just to assure the commission that my client, who is sitting here, is fully aware and wants to comply with every, you know, everything that the city is requiring him for him to do. I, as his realtor, sold him the home, and I assured him that I would go through the steps for him to make sure that, you know, it wasn't another, something else that he wouldn't, that he would have to do. You know, I wanted to make sure that it wasn't too much, you know, for him to do. So that's why I'm here, applying on his behalf.
Definitely the extra step for a realtor.
Always.
Does the commission have any questions for the applicant?
Through the chair.
Oh, Commissioner Chase.
Yeah, just wondering, is the applicant aware of what the conditions are to change, you know, the wood siding to the stucco and?
Absolutely.
Everything that's been addressed here?
Yes.
You're fully aware of it?
It's already been addressed. We've all, we're just waiting for the use permit, so that we can obtain the permit. The contractors are already on standby, the architect's on standby, everyone's on standby, waiting for this process to go forward.
Okay, thank you. Very good, thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to address this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring the matter back to the commission for discussion or a motion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
If there are no other comments or discussion, I move that the planning commission approved use permit 11-014 based on findings of facts 1 through 7 and conditions of approval 1 through 24.
Second. Commissioner Chase provides a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and there's a 10-day appeal period. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. I have to go.
Yes, please.
Thank you. We'll move on to item seven, discussion. City, seven A is city staff discussion.
Well, I guess I'm first. Thank you very much for giving me a couple of minutes, hopefully fewer than 10, to discuss briefly with you and give you a little bit of an update on the Brown Act and conflicts of interest. So I want to make sure that you interrupt me with any questions anytime during the presentation. I'm going to do something a little different than perhaps you're used to. I don't have PowerPoint, fancy slides, I'm just going to try plain English and see how that works. So if you have questions, feel free to ask away. One of the things I'm going to, yes?
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
We have a requirement for ethics training every two years, I think it is.
Right.
And that contains considerable material on the Brown Act. Is this in addition to that, or is there, what is the difference?
So the reason why I'm coming here tonight is because I wanted an opportunity to provide a short background on both, on some of these topics, to some of the various city boards and commissions. So, for example, I've already done a lengthy presentation, which I won't subject you to, to the Park and Rec Commission before the beginning of the year. And in talking with Aaron, we thought, well, I should probably come to the Planning Commission, so they've heard the same thing, and then I'll plan to go to some of the other active ones as well. Also, so there's a point of reference, and so you can also understand what my perspective is and how I tend to interpret some of these things, and hopefully allow you to better understand my advice to you when you ask for it.
Great, thank you very much.
Let's take a couple of minutes and first talk about the Brown Act. You've all heard about it. I sort of like to get back to basics when we talk about the Brown Act and ask, why do we have a Brown Act? What's the whole point? And sometimes, if you figure out answers to the general questions, answers to the specific questions that you all have, become much easier to resolve. So the purpose of the Brown Act is really simple. It's to make government decisions in public. And that means not to make government decisions in private. So the next question is, well, what's a decision? And the answer is, it's a decision of your body. So then you ask yourself, how does your body make a decision? And the answer is, it's got to have four votes, because you have seven people on the commission. So when you look at the Brown Act from that standpoint, you realize it's pretty simple that you want to have governmental decisions made by at least four of you in public and not in some other forum. So let's talk a little bit about why we have a Brown Act. What are the purposes of the Brown Act? What is it trying to accomplish? So I think if you look at it, it's really saying that we want an opportunity for the public to be able to influence your decisions. And the only way that they can do that, and hear how everybody else is influencing your decisions, is for all of the influence to occur in public. That's the basis of it. And so that results in transparency. Why do we need transparency? Well, if a court is going to review a decision of any of the city's governing bodies, they're going to need to figure out what was the basis of the decision. And if the reasons for that decision and the influences on that decision aren't in public, how can the court possibly figure that out, if it all happened behind closed doors, or if it were done in secret? So that's really the fundamental basis behind why the Brown Act says what it says. And the result of that is that then, the theory is, you have an increased trust in government. And in fact, it was interesting, just as an aside, I was listening to a report on the radio the other day, and somebody did a study of why people tend to be happy in different societies. And one of the things at the top of the list is trust in government institutions. I thought that was very interesting. And so that's one of the things that we try to do in our society, is have a lot of trust in government institutions, and that's why we have the Brown Act. So if communications and a collective consensus among four of you occurs in private, then that would, in theory, be a violation of the Brown Act, right? Because we've said we want to have decisions among four of you that are done, at least four of you done in public. So why would that be a problem? Well, it's because the public can't influence your decision anymore, because you've already made up your mind. If four of you have already decided together, before you come to the meeting, I'm voting yes on this, then the public doesn't really have an opportunity to influence that decision. You've already made that decision. And then also, as I said, the reasons for the decision might be hidden. And so a court can't review those decisions, because they don't really know what they were, because you didn't tell them what they were, because it wasn't in public. And so the people that are not involved in the decisions and can't influence them are going to be understandably upset. They're going to say, how come I didn't have a chance? Or whatever I said, they didn't really listen to. They seem to have their minds made up. And a lot of times, criticism of public institutions arises when people don't think they have an opportunity, or at least a fair opportunity, to influence the decision makers. And so that's really what the Brown Act is essentially about. The one key word for the Brown Act that I tell people to remember is collective consensus. So collective consensus means that somehow or other, a majority of the board gets together outside of a public meeting and makes a decision. That's what a collective consensus is. So let me tell you what a collective consensus is not. If every one of you goes to Aaron, or Laura, or Matt, and asks them questions and gets information about the project, and they tell you, and you say, that's very interesting, I don't really agree with that point, I do agree with that, what about this, what about that? And then after you're done, you say, thank you very much, I really appreciate your time, that's not developing a collective consensus. It would be, however, if Aaron then goes to the next person and says, well, you know what, Commissioner Johnson said so-and-so, and I think she's going to vote yes on it, what do you think about? What do you think you're going to do? So in that situation, Aaron would be acting as sort of the hub of a wheel, in which he's soliciting feedback from all of you about how you're going to vote, and telling everybody else how that's going to happen. Now, we're sure that doesn't, that doesn't happen. So, that's good, and that means nobody's violating the Brown Act when they go back and forth between staff, themselves and staff, to understand a project. And so the same thing occurs if fewer than four of you talk amongst yourselves. But that's where you get into problems, because sometimes, you can't control what persons number two, three, and four are going to do. So if Commissioner Chase decides to have a conversation with Commissioner Marshall about a project, that's okay, no violation of the Brown Act. But then unbeknownst to him, Commissioner Marshall, who's not here, which is why we're picking on him, goes off and speaks with somebody else, and then that person goes and talks to a fourth person. And then right there, without the commissioner having done a single thing, there's a potential violation of the Brown Act. So that's why what you hear from all the lawyers that you go to the AB 1234 training on is, don't talk to your other commissioners about a decision before the public meeting. You want to talk with staff, that's great, make up your own mind, that's wonderful. Listen to public testimony, that's fabulous. But don't exchange communications amongst yourselves, because it creates the inadvertent possibility of a Brown Act violation. And most of the violations are inadvertent. Nobody goes out and tries to do this. You know, really, they don't. There are very few situations in which that happens. So one question is, how do you avoid a violation, even an inadvertent one? Well, so I told you, don't talk amongst yourselves outside of a public meeting about one of these things. What about texting, email, you know, post something on your Facebook blog, see how other people are feeling about it, get some feedback, send that to some other people? Well, I have a couple of things I'll pass out for you. This outfit called the Institute for Local Government has about a 10-page packet on social media and the Brown Act. So it's kind of interesting. It's already old. It's March of last year. I don't think the media has changed that much, the technology has, but the basic aspects have not. And so I'll pass that out for you afterward. But the bottom line is, if you're getting information from other people and trying to find out what they think that are on the commission, then you're creating a, you're creating a problem. And what about talking to your constituents? Is any problem with that? No, you have a First Amendment right to do that with respect to what's on your agenda or anything else about city business. They're not sitting on the Planning Commission, so you can't have a Brown Act violation with them. Now, if they go out unbeknownst to you and tell other commissioners what you thought, then you know what? They're becoming the hub that may be creating a Brown Act violation, again, completely unbeknownst to you. So that's why you hear all of the attorneys giving you conservative advice, you know, don't talk about it, don't send email, don't do these things with other commissioners, if you can, if you can avoid it. Another thing to avoid is, don't hit reply to all on your email. If you're getting an email from one commissioner asking you something, if you want to reply to that, that's fine, but if you hit reply to all, and there's four other people on there, then you're going to be in big trouble. But again, keep in mind, you can't decide, you can't control what that other commissioner is going to do. He or she may send that to three other people, and then you're stuck. So that's how you really avoid these inadvertent violations, is basically keeping your opinions to yourself until you come to the public meeting, and then you can, you can talk about them. And that way, the collective consensus is developed here and not on email, on text, in a coffee shop at somebody's house, or anywhere else. Finally, last way you can avoid violation of the Brown Act is, don't talk about things that aren't on the agenda at your public meetings. That's also something that tends to happen on occasion. You know, there's maybe a discussion item on the agenda, somebody veers off into something else, and somebody says, well, what about this and what about that? Generally, the limits of that are, you can tell staff to bring something back on the agenda, have a brief comment about it, but try to avoid a substantive discussion of things that aren't on the agenda. So that's basically it with the Brown Act. It's, if you just remember the basic principles, that you're trying to have these decisions in public and not elsewhere, then it usually answers all of those, all of the questions about specifics that you might have. Does anybody have any questions about that? Does that make sense?
One quick question for you.
Yeah.
Excuse me. In the event that there was, you know, inadvertent problem with the Brown Act, what, you know, what would happen?
What are the consequences?
I've never really hear, well, yeah, what the consequences are.
Right. So the consequences range, like anything else, on a scale of 1 to 10. And at the low end of the consequence scale, somebody might decide, either a staff person, or me, Aaron, whoever, or a member of the public, they might say, you know what, you were doing this, or I found out about that. And they might send a letter, they might say, I think you've done something wrong, what are you going to do about it? And so in that event, we take a look at it, and the chances are, we'd probably come back to you and have you redo the hearing, redo the decision that you made. And in many situations, that will cure any violation of the Brown Act. And that's a pretty common thing that entities do, if there's an, especially if there's an inadvertent violation. So you can go back, you can have a redo, for lack of a better term, and cure that violation. So that's probably a 1 or 2 on a scale of 1 to 10. If things get a little bit more serious, then what happens is, some member of the public or somebody might decide they want the district attorney's office to look into it. Because violation of the Brown Act does carry potential penalties, criminal and civil penalties. So the DA's office might want to look at it, and they might decide that there is a real problem. And with other entities I've represented, that's happened. So you'll get a letter from the district's attorney's office saying, you had a real problem when you did X, Y, and Z. Again, they will almost always give you an opportunity, and the law gives you an opportunity to cure. to cure those problems. In a situation that's a eight or nine on a scale of one to 10, you'll have an entity that says, you know what, we don't think we did anything wrong, we don't really care what these other people think, we're just going to go ahead and ignore it or do whatever. What happens in those situations is there's usually a court case of some sort, somebody brings a civil action, and then the court orders the, the entity to take some or refrain from taking some particular action. And there, you know, there are a number of cases in situations like that. Most of those involve big development projects where there's a lot of money involved, where, where somebody feels that somebody has done something wrong. Any other questions? Okay. So quickly, conflicts of interest. So there's two kinds and only two kinds of conflicts of interest, I'm here to tell you. Financial and not financial. Okay. And unfortunately, both are, well, both are what they are. The financial ones are governed by state law. And what that means is there are statutes, state statutes, that are written down that you can look at and decide, are you having a financial conflict of interest or not? And those are interpreted by regulations that the Federal, the Fair Political Practices Commission writes up. So for every one page of statute, there's 20 pages of regulations that the FPPC dreams up to implement that particular statute. The non-financial conflicts of interest are called common law conflicts of interest, not to be confused with common law spouses. The common law conflicts of interest are those that are not financial but relate to some personal relationship that you might have with somebody. And so we're going to talk about that just briefly in a second. So let's quickly talk about the financial ones at first. And again, you sort of want to look at what's the basis here. And the basis is that you can't make, participate in, or influence, or even attempt to influence, a governmental decision in which you have a financial interest. So if you start thinking about what those words make, it's actually what those words mean, it's very broad. Okay, making a decision, we all know what that is, you're sitting up here voting yes, that's easy. Participating in making a decision, hmm, well, what does that mean? That could mean sitting down with, with a staff person on the item that you have a conflict in and saying, you know, I think we should handle this this way, or I don't really like that, that number there, or I think we should tweak this condition of approval. So that would be participating in making a governmental decision, you're using your influence to do that. What about attempting to influence? That's even broader. So maybe you had a phone call with somebody, maybe you talked to one of your other commissioners and say, I don't think we should really do it that way. So all of those things are prohibited if you have a conflict of interest. All right. Well, I'm here to tell you the conflicts of interest, the financial ones, are often very difficult to tease out what's really happening. And the reason is because they're very broad, the rules are very complicated, they're always changing, and they always depend on the specific facts. And every conflict's question is a hard conflict question. There are no simple ones. A lot of people come up and say, oh, I have a simple question, can I vote on this if I have a so and so and such and such? Timeout. Oftentimes, the answer depends on questions that you haven't even thought of before, because of those 20 pages of regulations for every single one of those rules. So it's often the case that we can't determine if you do or don't have a conflict of interest without doing some, you know, significant research. So that can include all kinds of things. Well, read the law, read the regulations, you can contact the FPPC, they have an advice hotline, usually takes a day or two for them to get back to you. Contact other attorneys in the area, how have they dealt with the situation? There's resources at the California League of Cities, there's all kinds of things that we might have to do to address one of your conflicts questions. So the message to you is if you think you have a conflict and you want me to tell you something about it, don't wait until the last minute. You're going to have to give me days in order to figure out the answer to, to questions that even you think might be fairly simple. Because they often depend on facts that you haven't even thought about. The bad news is that when I do tell you what I think the answer is, it's almost completely useless. And here's the reason. Under state law, you can't rely on my answer regarding a conflict of interest. Gee, that's hard to believe. What the heck is a city attorney good for? But under state law, the only people you can rely on for conflict of interest advice is the Fair Political Practices Commission. Oh, you say, well, that's no problem, we'll just call them up and get an answer from them. But no, oral advice doesn't count. You have to have a written letter from them. Oh, no problem, you say, how long can that take? A couple of days, maybe a week? No, it's months before you'll hear from the FPPC. And when you do get a letter from them, it'll be four or five pages long, and you'll get to the end, and you won't actually know the answer as to whether you can vote or not. So what is likely to be my advice if I think you may or may not have a conflict of interest? What am I going to be really likely to do if I know that you can't rely on my advice and it won't protect you? Well, that's obvious. I'm going to tell you, don't vote, recuse yourself. My advice is always going to be conservative. Because if I tell you, oh, really, it's no problem, go ahead and vote on that item. You know what, if I'm wrong, you're not protected. The FPPC can come after you and assess fines, it could be thousands of dollars. You could have to hire a lawyer on your own, the city's not going to pay for your lawyer, you're going to have to pay for your own counsel on it, because it's your personal decision that you made to participate. And you're going to say, well, but Mr. Marx Efrano, the city attorney, told me, they could, I could do it. And the FPPC is going to say, we don't care about that. So it's very important, you know, I'll give you the best advice I possibly can, but remember, most of the times, that advice is going to be, be safe. It's not worth taking the risk. In some situations and very complex ones, I've requested both oral and written advice from the FPPC. I can tell you from personal experience, it's not terribly helpful. And you would have been better off recusing yourself at the very beginning, rather than trying to vote on something in which you probably, but not surely, had a conflict on. So that's the best advice I can give you about the FPPC. So if you're involved in an issue that affects yourself, your spouse, your domestic partner, your kids, your business associates involving income, gifts, real estate, personal property, loans, contracts, investments, or campaign contributions, you might have a financial conflict of interest. So as you can see, it's fairly broad. So you want to look at what's on the agenda, make sure there's no possible connection between you and any member of your family and the people who are coming on that item or on the actual project that's there. That's the kind of analysis you need to be making on conflicts of interest. The financial part. Now, the non-financial ones are actually, believe it or not, sometimes harder to determine. Because those, there's no state laws on those, there's only cases. And cases only come up, well, once in a blue moon. Somebody has a problem, they got enough money to bring it to court, and a court decides. So there's very, very little guidance on those situations. You should look at, do you have a family tie, not immediate family, but extended family with the applicant? Are they your friend? Are they a business associate even though there's no financial relationship whatsoever? Is this person a neighbor of yours? Did your kids play on sports teams together? It doesn't matter if you're going to vote in favor or vote against. You say, well, I'm going to vote against the guy, how could I possibly have a conflict of interest? Doesn't matter, you'll still have a conflict of interest. Okay? So my advice to you on conflicts of interest that are not financial is if you have to ask, you probably have a conflict. Because it shows that you're already thinking about the conflict in your own mind. Well, gee, what should I do about this? Gee, I have my friend over here, you know, on the other hand, I'm sure I can make a, you know, reasonable decision. If you have to ask, you're, you're, you usually have a conflict. So, does anybody have any questions? That's, that's it for, for my advice for you tonight.
I too, through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
I too have a question. If we are, if we have a conflict of interest, and what is your opinion or your advice on if we wanted to speak as a citizen on that particular?
Oh, excellent question. So I, I forgot to cover that in my presentation, I was going to say something about that. So if you do have a conflict of interest, you don't lose your First Amendment right to talk about the item. So what you have to do is follow this rather cumbersome procedure whereby if you're sitting on the dais for items that you don't have a conflict on, when the item is announced, you say, I have a conflict of interest, I have to step down. You have to physically leave the room, you can't be in the room anymore. During the public comment period on that item, you can come in and say, hi, I'm Mary Johnson, I'm speaking as a private citizen, and I think blah, 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 whatever it is you want to say. Thank you very much. You have to leave the room until the conclusion of the item, and then you come back in. That's the process. Used to be that you could stay in the room, but then there were cases where commissioners or city council members were sitting in the front row glaring at everybody, you know, which is in effect an attempt to try to influence them, right? Which is something you can't do. So that's why they said you got to leave the room. So that's the answer.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you very much for your time. Sorry it went a little bit longer than, than I told you it would, I apologize.
Thank you. It was very enlightening, and I particularly realized the value of hearing you talk about it as our attorney, rather than just looking at a, a training book. Okay, moving ahead to city staff discussion, select the February 16th Architectural Review Committee members.
Commissioner Bissari. Commissioner Johnson. One more. Commissioner Mishra. All right, thank you all.
Okay, and the third part of city staff discussion is update on development activity.
So the, the major update, I believe you all received an email, the Treetops Apartment Complex, after about six years of being vacant, has broke ground. They've actually, they're out there now, they're doing work. They had a groundbreaking ceremony last week. It's going to be about a 14-month, 14-month construction process. What they're going to do is take down all the buildings to studs, then weatherize all of them, so put new roofs on them, put new exterior on them, all at once, so all 14 buildings, and then, or 13 buildings. And then from there, they're going to do two or three buildings at a time, they're going to do all the interiors and then lease them out, then move on to the next two or three. That way, they get some residence, and for the apartment holder, they get some cash flow into, into their business up there. Overall, it's a great project, you know, it's going to, think, number one, it's 200, 250 construction jobs that are going to be up there for a 14-month period, so obviously that's important in this economy. But even more important, the neighborhood has had to put up with a vacant apartment complex for six years. And they're going to have a nice new apartment complex now in their neighborhood. So that's definitely, I've already heard from a few of the neighbors who are pretty ecstatic and relieved at the same time that this had broken ground. So that's it. Other than that, the Glenview neighborhood continues to rebuild, a number of homes nearing completion now. I would say we'll most likely have a handful of residents who completely lost their homes during the fire, moved in within the next month or two.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Bissari.
Aaron, as far as the Glenview District, do we have any of those coming up in February for architectural review?
That's a question for the planners. Possibly one.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the Treetops. One of the issues that made it difficult for that project to survive longer than it did was the construction materials and the construction methods. Will the city be looking at, just to take an example, if, if you're using conventional nails on exterior, on the exterior wood trim, those are likely to be affected by salt, air. Does the city have the opportunity to make observations on that? Is there any mechanism for that?
Absolutely. I mean, our building inspector will probably be up there every day during construction for a couple hours every day. So they'll get down into those minute details of, I mean, everything from, you know, the type of nails that they use, to looking at those existing studs that are out there to see if there's any dry rot or any, that those studs actually have to be replaced. The one positive thing is, is we have a group of building inspectors that have been here for, you know, almost over a decade now, so they know those weather conditions well. Also, the same project manager from AMCo and same construction team from AMCo completed a project in Pacifica that's right on the coast. So they're pretty familiar with, with similar climatic conditions, so. But yeah, they're going to be up there and looking for that, because we don't want to have the future planning director in 2035 coming back with a, another project 30 years, 25 years after.
That's great, that's great to hear. Any other questions for staff on this?
Just real quick, on, on, exactly what Chair Peterson was saying, but I would assume then, that on their drawings, you know, they have their schedule of materials, and I'm sure, I would assume that it'd be laid out as far as just exactly what's going to be required, you know, to hold up, you know, in, in those particular conditions. So as long as it's laid out, and as long as the material that is, you know, required to be used, is being used, then we should be.
Exactly.
Knock on good wood, okay, right?
It's, it's exactly that, and then a combination of field inspection, since it is a renovation, I mean, there are going to be some situations where they say, we're using existing materials, and our building inspectors will go out there, they'll look at those existing materials and say, no, those don't work, you have to replace them with something stronger or, you know, more weather resistant.
Thank you. Commissioner Bissari.
I'm available for the Glenview Architectural Review for February if we need to.
Okay.
Through the chair. Commissioner Mishra. I have one item for the city staff. I noticed this on the agenda item number 6A, on the conditions of approval, number 12, the reference to the line diagrams is from the California Building Code. I think it should be California Code of Regulations or the California Plumbing Code. So we wanted to double check that. Thank you.
Discussion 7B is Planning Commission Discussion, appoint new Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair.
Okay. First, great job the last year, Chair Peterson.
Thank you.
I think been a, been a couple rounds with you now as, as Chair, and you always do a great job.
Yes, very good.
So as, as history goes, what happens tonight is the, someone makes a motion for the current Vice Chair, which is Commissioner Samut, to become Chair. And then the person who has not been the Chair or Vice Chair for the longest becomes the Vice, becomes the Vice Chair, and that would be Commissioner Mishra. So you could do it all in one, I'll do it all in one motion, and then you all vote on it, and then in February, we do the seat change.
Okay, Chair, Chair's open for motion. Who can remember those two names? Commissioner Johnson.
I move that the commission, not approve, but the commission appoint Commissioner Joe Samut as Chair, and as Vice Chair, Commissioner Mishra.
Very good, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Wait, 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 through the chair. Would it be, could I decline that?
Doesn't he have to accept? Don't they have to accept?
No, that's, that, this would not be the first time. But you can certainly decline.
Yeah, I, I assume you could, you could decline.
Yes.
Of course you could.
It's been done before a couple of times.
Tonight, tonight you choose to decline.
Very good.
So then it would be?
Chair recognizes that and refers, refers it back to Commissioner Johnson to form a new motion if you wish.
If it's in the, in the procedure of, of sequence, the next one would, would be, would be Commissioner Mishra to go into the Vice Chair.
Or into the Chair.
Into the Chair, rather, excuse me.
Right.
Into the, yes, into the. And then the Vice Chair would then be Commissioner Bissari.
Yeah. So you haven't been, you haven't been since 2000.
Right, he was, he was the Chair first.
Okay, very good.
Very good, is there a second?
Second.
Just a question on, so it's Commissioner Mishra for the Chair and Commissioner Bissari for Vice Chair, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And is that acceptable to both parties? All right. Now we're likely to have a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, congratulations.
That's an exciting one.
Any other Planning Commission discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item number eight, adjournment. The next Planning Commission meeting is February 16. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.